It was about fifteen years. So, in my estimation, we're probably looking at somewhere between ten and twelve years. And again, that's where the flexibility that if we have a fixed rate bond out there, you will not be able to pay ahead on that loan until the call feature. Now, you'd be able to collect the receipts ahead and put them into an account and wait till that call feature. But if you do have, um, you know, an interfund loan, we can definitely write in there some flexibility that as receipt, you know, if, if we exceed the two and a half million dollars of development incremental value right away, you could set those dollars aside until a certain period and call that in maybe a little bit sooner or start to pay from the bottom up as well, um, getting that interfund loan paid back, so.
So, when you, you, when you, you're saying the assessed value, right? When you're saying that value, that two million dollar value?
Yes.
Correct, I am. I'm talking about the assessed value that, you know, potentially, you know, if the, we call it incremental value in the TIF world because it's new value that was now already there. So, it is, it, we'll call it the, the value of the building, um, or proposed development that's being built, so yes.
So, if we're, if we're gonna just say that the, the base value is a half a million, we need two, two, two more million to service the debt, is that what you're thinking?
Um, yeah, I think that, that's the, what we were looking at. I think originally was, uh, when we were talking about minimum assessment, um, we were thinking that, you know, two to two and a half million dollars is what was gonna be able to service the debt. And again, we were looking at that like six hundred and fifty to eight hundred thousand dollar number for your borrowing, which I think that number has come down. We were thinking that we did, um, over approximately fifteen years. I remind you that as a county, you are only relying on the taxes of the county and the school district for that repayment. So, so different from a city, cities rely on the city, the county, and the school. So, they, they have a higher tax rate when it comes to TIF. And so, that's, I think, part of the reason that, um, this would take a little bit longer than, than the development maybe in, you know, that a city would be, uh, you know, undertaking.
Maggie, when that, when we determine the actual base value, none of those taxes go to pay off the TIF?
Yeah, right. And, and the base value will be determined by the assessed.
Twenty to half a million more than that.
Well, that's, I know, that's why I was, I wasn't sure if it, because it's a lesser number. Is it somewhere between two, two or two and a half, or is it two or what, you know? What is that?
I get, I, I'd have to look back on our sheets from a while back. I mean, we, we did those, those runs a while back, but I think they were, I think it was two and a half million.
Thirteen, thirteen.
That, Maggie, that was based on a, on a higher dollar amount of the TIF, too.
Probably half.
That is correct, so again.
Really?
With that higher dollar amount, I think we were looking at a fifteen year repayment, which is why I'm thinking that at a lower dollar amount, um, you know, with the same sort of development value, you're probably somewhere in that ten to twelve year range for repayment.
So, will you put together that, uh, payment schedule then based on, um, say, a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar intrafund loan?
Correct, yes. We would work with the, uh.
Based on a one and a half percent fixed rate?
Right. We will give you some options on that and then also show you how those options correlate back to that two to two and a half million dollar building value. You know, if, if you had improved or incremental or newly assessed value, we're gonna put that all into some numbers for you if that's something you're interested in looking at, um, so that you can make that decision. But we just, we felt that it was important to have the discussion. I mean, our goal at here is how we can best serve you and how we can help you save some money. And we do believe this would be some cost savings to the county.
Okay.
That's what today, today what we're here for, just if we have the decision that we wanna go with the interfund loan agreement, then Maggie's gonna put that information together and be able to present us, these are the different options, these are the different interest rates, and how we're gonna move forward rather than moving forward with a bond.
Okay.
So, do we vote today?
I, I would.
Or just not?
I would, I would like to see us make that determination. You know, as Maggie stated, that if we went with a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar bond payable in fifteen years, it, it might not get a very, it might not be well received from people that want to buy the bonds.
Yeah.
And if we can do this through, um, our impact fund, which was set up and the money has not been spent, but we made it for economic development and in the rural area. This money will get paid back, so it's not like that fund will go away. Those, those monies go right back into the impact fund, so we'll still be able to, a future board will use those funds to do something like this again.
Something again, yeah, okay.
So, I would, I would, um, like to see us move that way, so. Do you, you wanna motion to move forward with that, Matt?
Yeah, if we move, if we have the board degrees to move that way, then that's what we would like to see.
Scott, are you okay with it?
So, so what, what the decision is to use up to, um, what is it? Is there eight hundred, eight hundred in there then?
Seven seventy-five.
A little less than that, probably seven forty, seven sixty.
It's shy of it.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, up to four fifty TIF fund sources for the Armstrong Development? And, and then we'll get an agreement back from Maggie?
Right, we'll start to go through and approve the agreement and set up. We'll show, you know, the board will approve the interfund loan agreement and how we move forward with that.
Make that motion.
All right, thanks, Scott.
Second.
Okay.
When you want a four hundred and fifty?
Up to.
Up to four hundred and fifty.
Okay. Well, the actual engineer estimate, I believe, was eight hundred and forty. You know, if he missed it by seven, eight percent, it'd be closer to the nine hundred. And RISE is gonna pick up half of that, so that's where the four fifty would come.
Okay. Yeah, well, RISE is.
Not just sure how we say that.
RISE is a fifty fifty match.
Right.
Okay.
So, if it does come in at nine hundred, RISE pays four fifty?
Yeah.
Take four fifty out of our impact fund?
Yeah.
Right, but if it's over that, then I don't know, we'd have to.
You would have to amend your motion and make it four seventy-five or whatever it is.
Well, I mean, do you wanna just make it five to protect, um?
Up to five hundred?
Up to five and match the rise?
Yes, I would.
Probably makes it cleaner, I suppose.
That does make more sense, yeah.
Okay, I'll amend it to five to match the rise grant?
Second.
You concur with that?
Yeah.
All right, is there any other discussion?
Hope it comes in six.
From the board? Does this need to be a roll call?
All right, Scott.
Well, a call should be a roll call. Um, might as well.
We have a motion in a second to utilize up to five hundred thousand dollars of our impact fund to pick up the county share of the costs for the, um, Armstrong Development Road Improvement Project. Uh, Mr. Howser, you call the roll.
Chairman Pro Tim Whitman.
Aye.
Supervisor Groby.
Yes.
Drake.
Aye.
And Bell.
Aye. Hey, Maggie, before you jump off, or did you?
Nope, I'm still here.
So, so those, um, we're able to allocate TIF payments back to ourselves then?
Correct, so to be able to allocate TIF, you have to get an obligation. Fund loan agreement will be the obligation.
Okay.
The, uh, Becky Bell's very familiar with that, um, with, with that creation of that obligation and has seen these interfund loans done by other entities within your county for things like this. And so, we will be working with, uh, Jason Comiskey's office, um, and there will help us fight the interfund. We'll give you a bunch of options at both the four fifty and the five hundred, just so that we kinda know what things look like, and we'll be working on that with you. This doesn't have to be done at the same time as the bond issue. We can proceed forward with that bond issue sooner than, than later. This interfund loan really does need to be done, though, um, probably by, uh, our December one deadline. But again, we, we don't have any intention to stall this. We intend to just keep working on this, but I just kinda wanted to give you some of that timing.
Okay. One, one other thing, is it Jason or, or you that has, um, potentially a couple, uh, past examples of these, um, inter, interfund TIF source agreements with local governments?
Right, so we will, we have done a few, and I know Jason's office has done a few.
Is there, is there?
There will be plenty.
Is there any chance that you can send us like one or two of them, just to take a look at?
Absolutely, we can make sure that that happens, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Maggie, thank you.
While Maggie's still on, I'm sorry, Becky here, while Maggie's still on here, and I, we could've done this via email, but I'm just curious. Next Tuesday, we have the pre, the public hearing on if, when we thought we were going to issue bonds. Shall we still just keep that and do that for a safety net?
Yes.
Um, or, or? Sorry, Maggie, go ahead.
Oh, short answer to that is yes. You should continue to proceed forward with that, um, public hearing as just a safety net, as Becky said. Um, just in case something happens and the bid comes in much larger or, um, down the road, uh, what we've said is, let's say we get one year down the road and there happens to be a problem within the county and you really need those impact funds. By doing that public hearing, technically, we could go out and bond for that TIF project and repay the interfund loan immediately. So, that public hearing, uh, gives you a lot of options and opportunities. We likely will never need to use that public hearing, but we want the options and opportunities, um, that potentially could come from it if, if something would arise that's unforeseen by all of us.
Thank you for the explanation, Maggie. That's what I wanted to get out there. So, we weren't looking at the agenda for next week going, why are we doing this? There, there was a reason why we, we didn't stop that.
Okay. Maggie, thank you very much. Matt, Pam, Jason, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Where are the bid, where are we after this, you know, on the road and stuff?
Uh, John just put out a new timeline, and I believe that, uh, we are going to bid the first of September, right?
Hoping.
Yeah.
Good.
And I think.
Our review came back from the DOT quicker than what was expected, so we're hoping, uh, to shift the timeline up. We'll go back, open more.
About thirty days, right?
Yeah.
Good, good.
Okay, thank you. Next up, David Byer, Chief Information Officer. Discussion and or decision to approve the donation of computing equipment to the following organizations. David, you're up.
So, we, we have some laptops, desktops that are, um, no longer useful to the county. They, um, so we reached out to our community services contacts, and they reached out to various nonprofits, uh, to see if anyone would like computers, and many, many people replied. And so, these are the, the list that's in the agenda is that, the list of agencies that we would like to donate these computers to.
So moved. David, we have a motion from Scott?
Second.
Second from Maryland. David, now, all of these laptops have been stripped of everything, right?
Yes, we wipe them after we, um, get them back in our office, and that's when we either sell them, recycle them, or donate them.
Those revved laptops or tablets, those came out of our law enforcement vehicles?
Actually, they came from engineering, secondary roads.
Say, David.
Yep.
Any other questions for David? I think it's a good use of those, it really truly is. I appreciate your efforts on that, David.
Sure, and these are all part of our county agencies, by the way.
Okay, any other questions for David? We have a motion in a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Jason Slapp.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Jason Slapp, Silverstone Grounds Director, update on the courthouse renovation. Jason, you are up.
Well, um, today, March fifty-first, day of renovation. Renovation work started on June twenty-ninth. Um, project is on track, there are things going well. I have some pictures, if you guys wanna see them, on the presenter PC.
Yeah, I will.
Well, let's see. We want it on the, it's gonna go on the monitor or on the screen?
Up here, if, if.
Good.
Trying to drag those over to this monitor.
Oh, what do you mean?
If you double click on that. Are you all working?
No, it's working earlier. Set it up. Okay. So, um, June thirtieth, the second day of construction, uh, the Ronco Superintendent, Harold Darling, uh, let me know that he found some suspected asbestos containing material in the comm center. And it was underneath the tile, it was underneath the carpet. So, what I did is I got AMI Environmental in here the next day, they pulled some samples. I asked them to rush the samples back for the lab. Um, the results came back on the sixth, and it came back as, uh, being positive for asbestos, of course. And this is some of the demolition that, uh, kinda took place, uh, while we were waiting for samples to come back and, and lining up a, a crew to come in and do some abatement. Now, these are, these are curbs on the roof that are gonna, they're ready to accept some I-beams, and our, our chillers are gonna sit on those for the air conditioning for the building. And that was kinda interesting watching them do it. Uh, they built these boxes around, and then they drilled the holes through the roof, and then they poured concrete, and eventually they removed the box. The box kept it watertight while they were doing construction. So, um, on one of them, um, and this will come up here later, but we had a change order to move this roof drain because it wound up being right underneath one of these curves, so. And this is some more work, uh, this is the comm center, July thirteenth. Um, this is the mechanical room, once our boilers and, and stuff were taken out. Uh, this corridor here, or future corridor, is, it goes from the court security garage into the old Buildings and Grounds garage. So, they're gonna wall that off down here in this corner. They're gonna wall this off, and that's just gonna be an interior corridor from one garage to the other for court security.
Okay.
And then they set some I-beams, um, late July, and, uh, they, they pushed them up the steps here with these rollers and lifted them up in the ceiling in the first floor with scissor lifts. And basically, what these I-beams did, they cut holes in that elevator shaft on the first floor way up high and slid these I-beams in there, and that's what holds up the concrete from the elevator shaft on the second floor. There's some of the plumbing getting done for the restrooms in the basement. There's, uh, work being done in court security. The garage door is opened up, as you guys have probably seen, on the south side of the building, uh, where the new garage door is gonna go. And then, this is gonna be jail cells. This is inside the old Buildings and Grounds garage where the, uh, saw room used to be. It's gonna be jail cells now.
Okay.
And then, uh, quite a bit of the framing's done. Um, they may be even getting real close to being done with all the framing, so they'll be hanging drywall soon.
Wow.
So, those holding, holding cells, there's gonna be how many of those in there then?
There's gonna be two in there.
Is that two plus what we already have?
Yes. Two in addition to the, uh, three we have right now.
Okay, so total of five.
Yep.
Are they, are they, are they right next, or they're not next to each other, are they? The ones on this side and the other ones are on this side?
Right, yeah, they're, they're completely separated. The three are in group, and then the two are over on the other side. So, they'd be able to separate people that need to be separated there.
That was the, the issue that we were trying to get resolved.
Yep. Yep. And this is just the other day, we put an I-beam, or, uh, they put an I-beam up into the ceiling on the second floor because the removal of the stairwell is gonna widen out that hallway on the second floor. So, um, that was the disruption in the heating and cooling, I guess, uh, the other day, so we got that taken care of. And then, uh, this is just yesterday here where this, they cut this door in the stairwell. And it was quite loud. Uh, the assessor's office had to endure a really noisy day yesterday while they were cutting this door out and jackhammering it up into pieces, so. And that brings us up to where we're at right now, so.
Amazing how much was out in the yard today.
Yeah.
When I drove in, I couldn't believe it.
I think, yesterday morning, when, when I came in, they had four delivery trucks, drywall, concrete blocks, concrete trucks, they were really busy.
Just unbelievable.
So.
Thank you, thank you for showing those, that really helped.
Yeah, no problem. Um, we have two change orders at this point right now. Um, we had some, had some insulation and footings, was eight hundred ninety-eight dollars. That's gonna come off the, the twenty thousand dollar contingency that we had built into that bid. Um, we also had to relocate a roof drain for the, the curbs up on the roof. Um, that wound up being four thousand eight hundred sixty-five dollars that comes off that contingency. We did save, uh, quite a bit of money there, um, by having Ray Martin do that time and material rather than just giving us a straight bid, because the straight bid was around nine thousand dollars for them to do it. Um, we elected to have them go time and material on it, which saved us, you know, around five thousand dollars, so.
What are the roof drain finds like up there? Do we replace them all, or they are in pretty good shape?
They're all in good shape.
Really?
Yeah.
Are they casted?
Yep, yeah.
They don't have a bead through them where they're rusting through them, I mean. You ever seen that happen on those roof drains?
Mm-hmm.
Where it goes right down that line?
Yep.
In the water, and you may not know it has a leak unless the water gets up to it, so. Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Our, our roof drains seem like they're in pretty good shape, at least all of the, uh, parts of them that I've seen.
Good.
So, Jason, then, were those change orders approved by HGM, too?
Yes.
Okay, so you're gonna have to come, do you have to come to us to, for those to be approved?
Um, I will after the, the contingency.
There's an allowance.
Yeah, that, that's part of the.
The twenty thousand.
We've already approved it, we already approved that up to, what, twenty grand?
Twenty grand, yeah. It was built into the bid.
Right.
So, it's in the final cost.
Sure, the last, um, let's see, I shouldn't say the last. One of the meetings that you attended with the board, you said that a state auditor requires board action on all change orders? That's not true?
Well, these weren't.
So, if it changes your contract amount, that's.
Oh, okay.
It's already in the contract, that twenty thousand dollar allowance, that's what this. We knew that there'd probably be some unforeseen conditions, so we built in a twenty thousand dollar allowance. If it's not only used, it goes back to you, whatever's not used.
Okay, okay.
Um, we have a couple of change orders that may be coming, um, to us, and everybody needs to be aware of them. Ronco is asking for a, a time delay for, due to the asbestos, um, saying that we held them up during construction. So, um.
Because of the asbestos?
Because of the asbestos. They're saying they had to redirect, uh, labor. They had to, they're wanting us to pay equipment rentals and different things. Um, I disagreeing with it at this point, um, right now. Um, I just want you guys to be aware that something may be coming down like this, um, but I think we're gonna try to dispute it.
Or split it.
Yeah, something.
Well, this, that, uh, you know, that, that asbestos was an unfortunate find. However, the project was big enough, I can't see where it really slowed down any work, did it?
I, I don't think that it did, I really don't.
That's how hard the conversation we're having with them. We, we do not agree with what they're submitting at this point.
Okay, good.
I mean, I have, I have a timeline, you know, on this, the second day of the job is when, you know, they made the discovery. The very next day, I had AMC, or AC, or AMI out here to do the testing. I rushed the results, we got them back on the sixth. RFP was sent out for it on the thirteenth. I went through four contractors in two days, got the bids in on the sixteenth, and GMCo was low bid. GMCo got in here on July thirtieth, started work, it was a Thursday. They worked Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and we turned it over to Ronco on August third. But the entire time, um, every single day, I walk around the job site, take pictures, you know, kinda observing what's going on. And if you go through the timeline and look at the pictures, you can see that Ronco's crew was just redirected to a different area of the construction project. I mean, I just don't see where we cost them eighteen thousand dollars.
And they're, they submitted a schedule with it, and right now, their completion schedule is still the same. So, we're fighting it, so we're working through it.
And then, um, we're, we're still talk, this is in the early stages. We have some fire sprinkler, um, piping that may be too low in the comm center area. The reason why we're looking at that so closely is because the, the raised floor in there is gonna be up off fourteen inches. So, any kinda headroom that we have in there is gonna be valuable. Um, we may be possibly looking at, uh, removing of all the fire sprinkler and, and kinda starting fresh, getting it raised up higher. Um, or we may be just looking at lower ceilings, too, I guess. We're just kind of at this point right now where we're kinda looking at our options.
So, what, what is the, the clearance that you're working with? Get to take away the, the floor, take away the drop ceiling, what is that clearance?
So, some of it drops pretty low, it is seven, eight, seven, ten, somewhere around there. Yeah, when it, and that was unfortunate when ETI, we came and did their field verification, they couldn't get back in that comm center to see where all the runs were, uh, basically running underneath each other. Now that it's cleared out, there's some runs that are pretty low. Um, my understanding is that some of it's old as well, so they're having a tough time finding some parts, pieces for it, so. Wyatt's working through that with the sprinkler company to see what best options we have.
Once we know what our options are, we'll bring that to the board, board can make the decision on what, what direction we go.
That, uh, that only affects the nine one one area?
Yep.
Um, actually, what they proposed is to redo everything on the ground.
Everything on the ground floor?
On the ground floor, so it's all, it'd be a whole new system on the ground floor for that, um, in the comm center. Um, that was their original proposal.
So, uh, we did advert a change order, uh, the other day when they put that I-beam up on the second floor by doing some of the work in-house ourselves. So, um, we moved, we removed some ductwork and removed some water lines and stuff for them to put that I-beam up, and then we reinstalled it, so. And, and, uh, we, we did take out a builder's risk policy. Garfield took care of that for us, so.
Yeah, but contact ICAP, and they, they're gonna add that to our, uh, existing insurance policy. Uh, just in, uh, with an annual increase of about twenty-six hundred. Um, of course, this year is gonna be prorated, so, uh, as soon as Melissa gets back, we'll send them a check for thirteen forty-seven. Um, it was one of the lowest ones. I had Smith Davis go out and look for builder's risk, and the cheapest she found, uh, Smith Davis was, uh, roughly around thirteen thousand. So, going with ICAP is, is gonna save us, uh, quite a bit. And this will be added to our, um, uh, value of the building itself, uh, of the, uh, addition of, of our property value for this county, so.
So, will we have to deal with that in any future projects then?
Well, we'll have to deal with it until this one's over.
Until this one's over. Um, from my understanding, I think this was always been in, uh, contracts, but we just, this is the first company that's really requested this builder's risk. From my understanding, I think this one's always been in contracts, but we just, this is the first company that's really requested this builder's risk. I'm not sure why, but so my radar now, so each contract, I'mma, I'mma search it out.
Kim, that, that's in your, in HGM's contract?
It's in the contract between you guys and the contractor. It's, it is typical for all construction projects. That basically protects the owner that every pay request that comes to you, anything that you have purchased is protected if something happens to the building, is what that's for.
Okay.
Last thing I have is the brick colors. Would have brought samples up here if you guys could have looked at them, but you wouldn't have been able to compare it to the outside of the building. Bottom line is, we're matching the brick colors as close as possible. They discontinued the brick that was used on the original courthouse.
No.
Yeah, if you guys, if you guys have ever noticed, the Buildings and Grounds addition was put on in 2000 or somewhere thereabouts. That brick doesn't really match the main courthouse either. This brick's even gonna be a little bit more different than that, but we are getting it as close as possible.
It's pretty close.
Would it be better to get it a, a complete contrast, so it looks like something completely different? Rather than trying to match?
Yeah, we looked at that option, but you're tooting into existing so much that at these locations, I just don't think it would work.
Okay.
We do have some of the original brick from when they built the addition that we'll be able to use when we're piecing in around the windows when they cut them out, different things, so.
You have some of the original brick?
Not original to the building, but original to the addition that they built for Buildings and Grounds.
Oh, okay.
Side, so.
I walked around the courthouse with Jason and I've been by this courthouse probably thousands of times.
Right.
I never noticed the brick difference between the existing courthouse and the Buildings and Grounds addition until he pointed it out. Just never noticed it. I don't, I think.
You don't, you don't remember chewing Dean Page out because the brick didn't quite match?
Uh, no.
That corridor that you're building between the two, that wall stays and you'll work on the inside of that for the corridor? Or does that wall come clear out?
The, the wall will be, it'll be closed in. Right now it's, it's like a cove you walk into.
Uh-huh.
It's gonna be walled off even with the rest of the building.
So it will have a new wall?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
And that's just gonna be so court security can transfer inmates between the two garages if necessary, so.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And work in the county attorney's office will be wrapping up this week, so we'll be completely out of Matt's hair.
Everything, it's, the nice thing was early on, he reminded me to call the dentist because of the drilling they were doing.
What they had to do is they had to, they had to drill up through the roof.
Oh, okay.
And then put in ball thread all the way up for the concrete forms and stuff and they had to weld brackets to the bottom of I-beams so they didn't, you know, the units just don't lift and off the roof someday.
Wow.
So it was quite an ordeal. We had to move the roof drain, of course, which kind of made things last a little bit longer. They're up there today doing the fireproofing on all the steel, so.
Mercy.
Okay, and you, the county attorneys, happy with you and all that good stuff?
I haven't, I haven't really talked to Matt, I hope so.
You just tried to go around him, waiting.
Okay, that's not all I have, you guys have any questions?
Any questions for Jason?
Nice report, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for taking all the pictures along the way.
I have lots more to tell, so.
Thank you.
Jason, you are still up. Next is the discussion for, and/or decision to sign a contract with Parallel Technologies for the county's security upgrades in the amount of $777,437.46. Jason, you're up.
Well, we've talked about this quite a bit. Basically, I just wanted to see if I could get the board chairman's signature on the contract so we could get, get things going on it.
If, if I could ask, what are you? How are you securing the funding for that?
Bonds, we, we hadn't discussed at the last meeting, I thought.
I think we actually had a motion already, didn't we?
Yeah.
But we haven't sold you those yet, so this initial cost is coming from the sheriff's forfeiture fund, right?
That's possible, yeah. Also, there was some talking about maybe coming out of Fund 19 to keep everything cleaner.
I think Becky was telling us about the.
I'm.
Does this amount include the?
Right, I'm still on here.
It does.
Cause we would just pay it back then, right? Becky, we'd pay ourselves back.
So we've built a pre-bond expense account code in Fund 19 already that if, and I think Scott chimed in on it last time we did test it too and it would be cleaner that if we, we have those funds there, we use that pre-bond expense account code right now. When the funds come in at the end of October, it would be a very easy and clean and transparent transfer to reimburse that fund back with bond proceeds.
Yeah.
Of course, that's still a board decision, but if we split it up between forfeiture funds, Fund 19, gaming funds, then we have a lot more to transfer back to. It, it's, it's up to all of you, but a, a pre-bond expense account code has been created and just, or Jason has that information.
Are you, are, are you ready and is the jail ready to move forward with this, Jason?
Yep.
I'm going to make that motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, moving on.
That'll be huge.
Yeah.
Huge, Tiffany's all smiles back there.
Jason, are you still up on this with Tiffany or not?
No, I don't really.
Jason, thanks for everything.
Okay.
Next up.
Thanks, David.
Next up, we have Tiffany masked jail administrator discussion and our decision to approve and authorize the chairman to sign a food service and laundry agreement with Summit Food Service. Tiffany, you're up.
Yes, do you need copies? Yes, yes, please.
The different vendor?
It's a different vendor, most, everything is very similar.
Thanks, Tiffany.
Uh, sure.
Who was the other vendor? Did, how many vendors did you?
How many?
How many vendors, did you put this for RFP?
We did not do formal RFP. We went, we had it posted through some national advertising and it was important to, most of our projects, we tried to at least look at vendors who are already in Iowa. So with communication through ISSDA and seeing who other people had as their vendor, we, we started exploring as we were having up and down problems. Problems get resolved and they just kept, kept recurring. So last fall, we knew we needed to start looking at some other options, so.
Was Airmark your vendor now or?
Airmark, yes.
I know it's in here when I read it, but does the food come all prepared?
It does not, they have staff.
Really?
Yep.
Still have that?
Food service staff that use the kitchen in the jail.
Oh, okay.
So they do all of, all of the cooking there. So this draft is gone through for operational purposes and making sure at least the needs we have now and some additional are included from the operational perspective. And then Leanne has also reviewed it from a legal perspective for us.
Thank you, Leanne. And you're happy with this?
Yes.
Can I support Tiffany on a change of vendors?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve this contract.
So, so it's just a one-year agreement?
They do one year and then it's continuous unless notification happens, yes.
So the, it says, I didn't, I haven't read it, I guess all, but it says they're a New Mexico limited liability company, but then their correspondence goes to Sioux Falls?
Yes, their, their main operational office that we will go through is in Sioux Falls, but their parent company is New Mexico.
This is going to affect upon signature, our chairman?
Um, let's take a minute first.
Okay.
Second, did she make the motion?
Yes, I did.
Second.
So Tiffany, what, what do you have budgeted for this service?
This service? I believe the line item already is about $600,000.
How much?
For food and laundry, about $600,000, I think is what has been placed.
That was based on Airmark's cost?
Yes.
What, what, what do you estimate these costs?
I estimate them to be very similar. Airmark had some price increases coming, so this vendor is lower than what Airmark's increases were going to be. So we're, we're anticipating it to be very similar. Actually, in some categories, if you see on page six, the pricing there, the breakdown of the per meal price. So this is broken down in smaller range of the number of meals and so it will be much more accurate where Airmark had larger category, say 25 to 30 in their, in their numbers of meals for the specific price and they would do a weekly average. So it is going to be more exact and then these prices based on population, most of them are a few cents lower than our current pricing and definitely lower than Airmark's proposed increase.
Okay, how are you doing on the pay-to-stay reimbursement?
I did not look up those numbers before I came here today, so I don't have that answer at the moment. COVID, I think we had a lot of people call and ask for extension or reduced payment plan when COVID started in March. And so we tried to accommodate those and still have some money coming in instead of none. So I do know some modifications were made for some of those individuals.
And the, the cost for federal prisoners, the food and laundry services in that?
Yes.
Cost?
Yes.
Has the state increased the amount of money they pay us for holding their prisoners?
The state has not increased the daily rate, but what they have increased right now because of the timeframe that they were not taking prisoners during COVID and then because they require a negative COVID test before they will schedule an intake of inmates from jail to prison. So they are paying all of those additional days where normally those people would not be with us and we wouldn't have anything coming in. They have extended what days they're willing to pay for, but they are still at $50 a day. Now, the US Marshals did increase to 110 from the 7926 a day that it was. And also we have some stipulations for some, some transports for the US Marshals that includes a staff wage and a mileage rate that also is an increase that we didn't have at all before.
What would be the current, um, people that you're housing right now? Are you down or?
Uh, we're, no, we're not down. We're in the 250s.
Really?
Yes. So we got, when COVID first started, we got down right around 200 and, and we're back steadily in the 250s.
Okay.
Now, so we're, we're getting.
I thought maybe you were down a little bit, but.
So are you still getting your fair share, or maybe I should put it that way? Are you still getting federal prisoners in the jail?
We do, yes.
And it hasn't slowed down since the rate increased?
The rate of new federal prisoners coming in did slow down, but because of freezes from being able to transfer inmates, a lot of the ones that we had stayed for longer than they probably would have otherwise because by their court case, they were ready to go to a federal prison, but the federal prisons weren't accepting anyone. So they, we had some there longer for that. They just recently, in the last probably two, two to three weeks, started with new street arrests as a lot of indictments have come down. Cause even though they haven't been making those arrests, they haven't been doing those things, the behind the scenes casework from the law enforcement has still been happening. And so several indictments were put out a few weeks ago. So we are starting to see a few increases in street arrests of federal inmates. And we're seeing an increase with local law enforcement as well.
Okay. So does the, does the chair, does the board sign this? Are you signing, who's signing this agreement?
I was under the impression that the board needed to sign the contract, so.
Was that your motion?
Yes.
Okay, is there any other questions for Tiffany?
Thank you for that update.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We just have a couple of received and filed things, next thing on our agenda is adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Do you want to get your signed copy or?
We have a motion to adjourn.
My groupie seconded.
So.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay.
Thank you, Leanne.
Do you want, do you want to take this with you, Tiffany?
I can, but if you need copies or to do something else with it, I, I actually have my stuff in the conference room, so I won't be here for a few minutes.